Time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to call this session, the Bridgewater Town Council Meeting, to order. Can everyone please stand and join me for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome, everyone. We've got one of our councillors on Zoom tonight and also our town interim town manager, Blythe Robinson. Let us see. So again, just to remind everyone at home, the town council meeting is being streamed live via YouTube. Please go to the Town of Bridgewater Facebook page if you'd like to find the link. Let's see. First up, I'd like to extend some condolences to the family of Robert Burgess, passing away September 14th, 2024. Mr. Burgess was in the US Navy and served at Vietnam. Can I get a moment of silence for Mr. Burgess and all deceased veterans for the Town of Bridgewater? Thank you. All right. Start off with approval of minutes from previous meeting, referring to the meeting minutes of September 10th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So, a second.
Okay. A second for discussion, yes. Ms. Ellenberg?
On page five, I would like to have a correction of what my vote was. Page five, legislation for action, the very last, second to last line says, "I voted And this was to suspend the 14-day rule regarding, uh, this was made by councillor Robinson, or the acting town manager. I believe I voted no. Could the record please reflect that? Thank you. Otherwise, the minutes look fine.
Just to be clear, which one line are we looking at?
Page five.
Motion to postpone?
Uh, let me see here. It'd help if I put my glasses on. Okay. Legislation for action on page five.
Yeah, there's two roll call votes listed, a roll call vote and a voice vote. Which one are you referring to?
It was a voice vote, the second voice vote.
Okay. And you were saying you had voted?
I thought I voted no. The one above says no, and I thought I voted no on the second one. Whatever.
Well, you were, you were, you were voting to, a motion to postpone. It was your motion to postpone. So it would make sense that you voted yes and everyone else voted no.
Okay, my mistake. My apologies to everyone for taking up time unnecessarily.
Not a problem. So we have a, we had a first and a second. Any further discussion on those minutes? Because we do not have Ms. Robinson here in person, we do have to take a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
I mean, Ms. Ellenberg, yes. Sorry.
Ms. Robinson?
Robinson, yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And for the minutes of September 27th, 24, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second by Ms. Striggles. Any further discussion on those minutes? Seeing none. Again, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Takes care of our minutes from previous meetings. Announcements for the president, I just have one right now coming through the town clerk's office. The town clerk wanted the residents of Bridgewater to know that the ballots for the upcoming election have arrived in the office. They will be, look to be mailed out to those who asked for mailed-in ballots by this weekend. So look for them, please, by midweek next week. As everyone, last day to register to vote, for those who need to register, is Saturday, October 26th, by 5:00 PM. Other than that, you know, voting day is Tuesday, November 5th. There's a number of early dates that the town clerk has. Please check the website through the town clerk's office to get those dates. But, but look for those ballots to be sent to you sometime next week. That's all I got from the president. There's no proclamations tonight, so we will move to citizens' open forum. And let me please announce that due to Massachusetts Open Meeting law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment period if appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. If you come on up, please state your name and address for the record, and please keep it to three minutes or less. Would anybody like to come on up and speak? Come right up.
Good evening, Mr. President. MJ Spigoun, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. I come in this evening to speak with you and the council and members in attendance and also residents. Wanted to let you know, as vice chair of the Finance Committee, we have still two openings on the committee. One was already filled, but right now, I'm still waiting to hear if we're going to have two more members. One still needs to be appointed by the town manager, one needs to be appointed by the town council. The other reason I'm up here is because I'd like to try to encourage folks to maybe possibly join on this. I know there was a councillor that was at Autumn Fest earlier in the weekend, and I certainly appreciate that as a volunteer, seeing that happen. That is something really good. I'm glad the council's involved in that. But my bigger concern is with the Finance Committee. We have had issues in the past with membership not being in attendance to give us a quorum. We've had several meetings in the last couple of years that have been unable to be held due to the fact that we have lack of quorum. And I'm not sure if it's because members may have stuff that's previously scheduled, or they just can't make it work. But my big concern is that our committee is not able to do its work when we don't really have that many people in attendance. Oftentimes, we have the barest of minimums, and sometimes even then, we can barely reach it. Last night, I was supposed to actually have a meeting. I was going to chair on behalf of the chair who was unfortunately out, he had already let us know, but we couldn't even get a quorum together. And it concerns me that this keeps happening, and I would like to see it change. I know pursuant to the town charter, the three organs of government that have the ability to do appointments are the town manager's office, the town clerk's office, and the town council. So I would ask through you, Mr. President, to members of the council, for those of you who actually helped do those appointments, I would reach out to your members that you appointed and ask them to please be in attendance for the meeting. We need these people in attendance so we can actually do the work of the people and give you folks recommendations. Barring that, there is another solution, since the Finance Committee serves as sort of the replacement to the old town former governments' advisory board. You could always amend the charter. If we keep having issues with attendance, the Finance Committee Subcommittee of the Town Council could supersede it. I actually, I actually work in a municipality where their Finance Committee is just a Subcommittee of their Town Council. Maybe it's time we try to figure that out, because if we can't get a quorum together, we can't do the work. If we can't do the work, we can't help you. So with that, Mr. President, I will, I will yield back.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Kitty Dougherty, 524 Colton Street. You have something exciting on your agenda tonight. You can envision me jumping up and down with glee. It's 14 years in the making, and I hope tonight that it's a favorable vote for the council to accept the conservation easement from D-CAM for the Old State Farm Trail. And then we can commence with the next step so that we might even be able to start the parking lots by the end of this month, because we do have the money in hand, some with the nonprofit and some with a grant that's here in the town. There's another thing I wanted to mention, and that is the excitement that so many people have said about Styles and Hart. People have watched the parking lots evolve up on Broad Street, and they first thought it was going to be a development, and then they saw it was a parking lot, and then they saw the kiosk. And even though the checklist isn't done, and even though it's not officially opened, it is well-used, and people have been excited with it. This one challenge, though, that we are going to be facing, and I know that this will smooth out once we have different things within the town so that the rules and regs are up, so that people know what the rules are. But right now, people are walking their dogs, and people do not clean up after their dogs, and our million-plus-dollar park with 85 acres of open parkland and a mile of riverfront is nicknamed by some people as Poopy Poochy Park, and we can't allow that, because that's kind of an insult to the rest of us. So I was thinking that one thing that could be done on that as an interim, because people are going to walk their dogs, and if you see a naughty dog and you happen to be up there, to click it with your phone, have a picture, and then, we no longer have storks on the common where people could throw soft vegetables at someone that was naughty. But what we could do as citizens is just post photographs of these naughty people with these very more comfortable dogs once they walk around. And, and then that should be self-leveling at that point, because nobody's going to want to be in the storks more than once. How's that for an idea?
Good idea.
Thank you, Kitty. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please? Go on once, go on twice. All right. Thank you for those that came up to speak this evening. We'll have a chance at the end if you stick around to the end of the meeting, too.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion.
Regarding what? We're going to appointments next. What is it regarding?
I know that, and that's why I'm asking for a motion to take something out of order.
Oh, all right. Well, that's, what is that, that you want to take out of order?
I want to take councillor comments now, after the citizens' forum.
Councillor comments out of order?
Yeah, like have them now plus at the end, like we have had in the past. Can we take councillor comments now?
It's two different things. So if you're taking it out of order, the councillor comments would be now, as opposed to when they're scheduled.
Okay, so we only get it once. Okay. So may I personally take my comments out of order and forego them at the end?
It's atypical.
No, you, you have to make a motion to take comments out of order.
Which I did, and has not been seconded yet.
Yeah, someone will have to second it, and then you'll have to take a vote, and then if it's out of order, you all do your comments, and at the end, you adjourn.
All right. That's fine. So we have a motion to take councillor comments out of order. Does anyone second that? I don't have a second. So we'll postpone, so we'll keep that in order at the end.
Mr. President, I'd like to actually make a motion myself and take new business out of order.
Which business out of order?
The only new business we have.
Oh, new business out of order.
Resolution R-F-Y-25-002.
All right.
I'll second that.
And he has a second for discussion on that. Any further discussion on taking it out of order?
I'm sorry.
Seeing none, then I'll ask for a roll call vote to take item N out of order.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson? Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay. Then we will move forward then with item N, new business, Resolution R-F-Y-25-002. A resolution to raise the POW MIA flag, MIA flag brought forth by councillor Chase and councillor Striggles. Councillor Chase, if you'd like to discuss your, your resolution here.
Mr. President, thank you. Together with councillor Striggles, I had brought forth this resolution because there has been, as many of you know, a good deal of discussion in this chamber and throughout the town with respect to the POW MIA flag, primarily focused on the fact that there's not been a flag flown for, at least routinely, for some period of time. And the larger question was, well, where, where and when can such a flag be flown? And I know that there was discussion in some quarters with respect to possibly the Memorial Building and, and I think probably other sites. There were problems there because I think, you might remember, our former town manager had pointed out that there was concern about the existing flagpole on the Memorial Building. Perhaps if it were actually used now on that very old structure, it could compromise some portion of the front of the building, the facade. So there were issues, and I thought, well, it's really very simple to resolve it. We can simply, by resolution, we can propose that the POW MIA flag be flown throughout the year, which is what this resolution does, with the exception of any time period during which citizens may bring forward a petition that's been approved by the council for the flying of another flag, which, as we know, pursuant to our flag ordinance that's been in effect for three or four years now, there's a procedure by which citizens can do that. And typically, during the month of June, there are two events in, in past years that have been, have been celebrated in that manner. So that's what the resolution does, and I thought it's, it's something well within the purview of the council to do simply by resolution or proclamation, just as we had done a couple of weeks ago with respect to POW MIA Recognition Day on September 17th. At that, we did, by proclamation, approve the flying of the POW MIA flag for that day, for September 17th. And I thought there's no reason why, for 11 months out of the year at least, that it can't be flown right from the flagpole in front of the Academy Building. So that's what I brought forward together with councillor Striggles.
Thank you. Councillor Strigles, do you have any other comments regarding it?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in regards to making sure that everyone knows that we listen to constituents' concerns of the flag not being up and wondering where the flag was. And we really wanted to at least acknowledge it on that Recognition Day and then create a more permanent solution from there. So the intention was to get that flag up as permanently as possible. I apologize if the flag coming down after it had been put back up was off-putting to some. It was always the intention to create this resolution, so we don't have to take it down. So I just wanted to kind of put that on record and make sure that people knew that based on how the first one was written, it did have to come down, and now we're going to do what we can do to make sure that it doesn't.
I had my hand up.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strigles. Mr. Lindy?
So I'm in favor of this resolution with one comment for the record. That was my original intent for the proclamation that you, the proclamation that you and I co-sponsored. And I was kind of surprised, and I was upset, that someone raised a concern. They didn't certainly raise the concern with me. And I think it's a disgrace that it came down. I worked, I did not realize that councillor McGrath had worked on this before me. When the thing went up on Facebook with the person suggesting it, I put up a post that, you know, we'll, we'll work on it. You jumped in and co-sponsored with me. I did not mean to slight Mary if I did that. But I just wish that there had been a discussion. I don't, I'd like to know who said to take it down, for the record.
Mr. Chase, if you want to answer that.
Thanks, Mr. President. And just in response to your question, Mr. Lindy, I was informed by a citizen, I guess it was on Tuesday, I think, of this week, this past week, that the flag had been flying. And they called to indicate to me that they thought, they thought it had been intended for a single day of commemoration. And I said, yes, I think that's exactly right. They said, well, it's actually still flying, which I hadn't been aware of. And I viewed the flag myself to see that indeed it was flying. And I expressed that I felt that it should be lowered because the authorization in the proclamation that, Mr. President, that you read provided for one day in recognition of POW MIA Recognition Day. Now, some people might think that's just a mere technicality, you know, so it's flying for a few extra days. What's the issue there? Well, firstly, just as councillor Strigles has pointed out, this is something that we had been working on to try to come up with a long-term solution in any event. But there is a point not to be overlooked, and that is this. I referred a moment ago to the flag ordinance that citizens can use to petition the town council for the flying of another flag. I have a copy of it here with me this evening in case anyone would like to see it and become more familiar with it. It's about two and a half pages in length. And it is so lengthy because there are many restrictions and rules that governs the procedure, the process through which citizens must undergo in order to make that request.
Respectfully, respectfully, sir?
Let him finish his statement.
I would like to do an amendment.
You're not recognized, Ms. Ellenberg. Let him finish his statement, then I'll, I'll come to you.
Thank you.
And it's, there's a very detailed procedure that is followed when citizens wish to petition the council to fly a flag. And I think that if citizens are held to those rules very specifically in their request to fly a flag, the town should honor its own rules and its own proclamation or resolution, as the case may be, when we, by our own authority, choose to fly a flag, such as we did on September 17th. The point is that the town council does not need to rely upon that, the flag ordinance. We simply have the power, as we're proposing right here, to do it on our own.
To amend.
The citizens have very specific rules. Our only rule is to follow the letter of the proclamation or resolution that authorizes it. And as councillor Lindy himself recently enough had pointed out, this was, I think, at a executive session, meeting of the council on a totally different matter. But he raised the point, and I think it's a valid one, and I commend him for it, that what is the point of having rules, or indeed a code, if we don't follow it? And therefore, I think it was appropriate to seek that the, the flag should be lowered after the authorized period of its display.
All right. I want to go back. Mr. McKinnon had a point, and obviously he brought this out of order. So, Mr. McKinnon, do you have a comment?
I wanted to make amendment myself.
Okay.
I defer to Mr. McKinnon's amendment first, if I may.
Okay.
Or maybe we should hear both and decide what we want, to blend them? I don't know.
Okay. So you have an amendment. Do you have a comment that you want?
Yeah, I do. I just, again, I'm going to ask the question, who decided to lower the flag? On what authority?
Hmm.
Was the town interim town manager apprised of this? Did she do it? Who decided to lower it? And we could have remedied that the night that we voted for the proclamation if that information had been known. I believe you had commended me on putting that resolution forward, and you are more experienced with me on the council. Perhaps it would have been a good idea to make that amendment at that time.
Okay. Mr. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President.
I need an answer to that question.
Okay.
From somebody.
We'll get it as soon as we can get it. Ms. McGrath?
All right. So usually state and local governments follow the federal law regarding flag protocol. So the federal law states that as long as the American flag is flown, the POW, the MIA flag should also be flown under it. So we need to remember that these soldiers were sent, sent to war by our governor, government. Therefore, we should not forget them. So I also want to make an amendment, too. I don't know if it's the same one, as to take out at all times, all other flags would be flown under the POW MIA flag, because I know we only have two other flags right now, Pride Flag and Juneteenth. But what happens if more flags come? And we have to remember, I mean, the soldiers fought in the Civil War to free the slaves. The soldiers fought in, in Britain to make our country free so we wouldn't be under control, and we have a constitution, so everyone can be who they are. So I think everything should go under the soldiers, the POW, because they're the one that's changed this country and made it free for us.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Mr. McKinnon, was that, so what, was that a similar amendment that you're looking to make?
And now, therefore, be it resolved at the very end, right after the POW MIA flag to be raised before the Town Academy Building at all times, and then cross out everything under, behind that except during periods for which any other flag has been authorized pursuant to Chapter 157, Article 2 of the General Ordinance of the Town of Bridgewater. Like to have that crossed.
Okay. So that's a...
May I propose my amendment and see if we can blend them all?
I'll second his for discussion.
We'll second for discussion.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
No, it's fine. So Ms. Ellenberg, if you have any amendments or comments on that?
Mr. McKinnon's amendment and Ms. McGrath's amendment should be combined. They're excellent together, and I'm happy to work with them on the appropriate wording. And perhaps we bring this up at the next meeting so we get the wording right.
Was there anything different on your amendment, Ms. McGrath, compared to?
Would you mind reading that again?
Mr. McKinnon?
So we're just crossing out except during periods for which any other flag has been authorized pursuant to Chapter 157, Article 2 of the General Ordinance of the Town of Bridgewater.
I agree with that one.
Okay.
I agree with that one.
Was there a second?
Yeah, seconded for discussion.
We have seconded for discussion with Mr. Lindy.
So are we seconding the combined thing, or what?
We were the same thing.
The same thing.
Oh, okay.
Same thing.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Strigles?
Question for councillor Ellenberg through you. Was your amendment in the lines of what they were discussing, or did you have anything additional to add?
I'll be happy to share it. It'll take a moment. It changes the title to a resolution to permanently raise the POW MIA flag all year under the American flag. All others can fly third, fourth, et cetera.
So for procedural purposes, vote the first amendment, and then Ms. Ellenberg can make her motion, and then vote that amendment.
Okay.
I, I don't need to. Theirs are, combined are good.
Were you basically just amending the name of the resolution? Is that what you were doing?
Oh, okay. By changing the title, that fixes it?
That's a, that's a different amendment.
It's a different amendment, but...
So focus on, you're dealing with the first amendment, vote the first amendment, and then if you still want to propose that amendment, you vote that as a subsequent amendment.
Okay.
Discussion on the first amendment? Yes, that's fine. We're still discussing the first amendment. Mr. Chase?
So I, I know that councillor McKinnon has, has specified striking the reference to the, what I've referred to colloquially as the flag ordinance. The trouble with doing that is that that is, that remains an ordinance, and people can come forward and request, petition the council for flying, for example, the Juneteenth flag, or whatever flag they, they care to advance. And having, having struck that language, if that is the will of the council, it puts this resolution in conflict with an ordinance, because it doesn't make clear how these two are going to coexist.
Okay. So the only thing, I mean, I would, from what I've heard, and I might refer to our veterans' agents here, Mr. Martin, if you might speak to the situation and give us a little bit of input.
I'd make a motion to suspend the rules to have Greg Martin come up.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote to suspend the rules.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Striggles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. Mr. Martin, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I, I believe from what I'm hearing, all of the suggestions for the amendments are the same. And, and so the way that I would articulate it, I guess, a little bit more specifically, just because I'm familiar with the configuration of the flag out in front of the Academy Building, we fly, the, the American flag that's out there is a six-foot by 10-foot flag. The POW flag that would fly below that, which is what we flew last Friday, a week ago Friday, is five feet by eight feet. What I would suggest is that the, the ordinance, the Chapter 157, Article 2, perhaps would specify, so, you know, perhaps that would have to be amended, to say that the flag that would fly in accordance with that ordinance would be a three-foot by five-foot flag, and it would fly beneath the POW MIA flag. I think this eliminates any contention, in my view, because today we have the month of June, you know, for, for the Pride Flag and Juneteenth, for, for Juneteenth. There's nothing to suggest what might be a future flag. If somebody were to come and say, you know, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, which I think is a very worthy suggestion to say, you know, we should raise awareness by flying that flag, we would fly that flag beneath the POW MIA flag. And we're not in a situation where we're lowering the POW flag to fly another flag and to suggest that one flag is more important than the other. There are 81,131 service members still unaccounted for. And we're not in a situation where we're lowering the POW flag to fly another flag and to suggest that one flag is more important than the other. There are 81,131 service members still unaccounted for. And the motto of the POW, MIA flag is to never forget. And I think it goes against that motto to suggest that we would, we would take that flag down in lieu of another flag. I think we can accomplish everything by flying all three flags at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Mr. Lindy?
I don't know what point to raise under parliamentary procedure, but I still am asking the question before we take a vote on what authority was that flag removed? Who?
I do not have that any...
Can I ask the interim town manager?
Ms. Robinson?
She wasn't here.
Oh, she wasn't here, so...
Who was here, then?
Laurie.
Laurie, do you have information on that?
I do not know who removed it. I think I tried to talk to you, Mr. Lindy, but I wasn't aware until I got your email. So I do not know.
Mr. Chase?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, I indicated to our town council clerk that I felt that the flag should be lowered. And I frankly wasn't sure that that's something that was going to be able to be done, but I indicated to her that it was inconsistent with the proclamation that had been read, and that it should be lowered. And again, at the same time, I had been working on bringing forward the resolution that's before us tonight.
Okay.
So there was no authority? Because no one councillor has authority. The town manager has authority. Just want to make that clear.
Thank you.
It wasn't a directive. It was expressing my opinion, and that's what I did.
I heard ordered to take it down, so.
Comment, Mr. President?
Common courtesy.
I think that since our three amendments are all in agreement and so forth, there's a consensus that we should do the American flag and the MIA POW flag.
Well, this is what we're addressing with the resolution.
There's only one pending amendment.
Okay. I'm glad there's only one now. Good.
There was, there was one amendment that got seconded.
Okay.
You all are still on the discussion of that one amendment, so that will have to be voted. If there are subsequent amendments, you certainly could propose those. I would point out, for the conflict of law question, which I did hear come up, general ordinance versus resolution, a resolution under your own charter is aspirational. It's not a requirement. So this...
We need to make it an ordinance? To make it a requirement? To respect our constituents? Yes, thank you.
You all draft your legislation how you want to. That's not my role, but I just want to make clear that what you're voting is a resolution, not an order or an ordinance. So I want to be clear on that, because I did hear some discussion of conflict of law. An ordinance trumps a resolution, because a resolution is aspirational in nature, whereas an ordinance is a requirement. So this resolution is aspirational, saying it would be nice, essentially, for this to fly all the time. But it is not a requirement under a resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Through the President. Thank you.
Ms. Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town council. So despite this being aspirational, we can proceed with this, with potentially the amendment that's on the floor now. And if we all agree that we want to bring forward with some ordinance changes, to veteran agent Martin's point of putting some more concrete language around that, that's probably the most productive way to handle this.
You could bring forward a new ordinance utilizing the framework of the existing ordinance that's in place on your flag policy. And then that would cover all bases that you're talking about. Yes, you absolutely could do that subsequently.
Thank you.
And I just want to put that out there, that I will put that ordinance together.
Okay. Very good. So at least I think...
I will put that ordinance together with the three people who have moved amendments also. Thank you. And I think, or we could amend tonight to make this language with the amendments an ordinance. That would be a second amendment on top of...
We can't do that.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't do that, because you've put before the body a resolution. It's actually a whole different thing.
I see.
So, yeah, you could table this and then bring forward an ordinance on a later date, but you're voting and you've brought forward a resolution, so that's what it has to come out of the process.
Okay. I understand. Thank you, council.
At least the resolution will be able to take action on this right away.
That's right. That's what I was going to say.
Yes. So I think, I think the strategy is sound. I think if we can get this resolution done tonight, then we'll come forward with an ordinance that'll make more permanent situation. So getting back to just the amendment at hand of striking that last line, we had a first and a second. Any more further discussion on that amendment for this resolution? Seeing none, I will ask for a roll call vote on the amendment for the resolution.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
So this is the, just the first reading of this, so I would also make a motion to keep this at a council level. We'll bring this back for a second reading and final vote next time.
Second.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll also ask for a roll call vote to keep it at a council level.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Okay.
Point of information on the subject, so we can put the flag back up?
After the second reading.
After the second reading?
Oh, really? I didn't realize that.
I believe we need a second reading before we can take action on the resolution.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's up to the town manager at this point, because there is no ordinance in place that would dictate that. The town manager runs the administration of the town. So I think technically the town manager could make that decision.
That was my point on lowering the flag, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will bring that resolution for a final review at the next meeting, and again, we'll work on our ordinance for long-term stability of that particular item. Going back to where we left off, appointments. We have two appointments in front of us this evening, both for the cultural council, the first being Theodore Simonini, Simone, I think I spelled that right, and then the second being Haley Besowitz. Both were interviewed by the Citizens Advisory Committee on 923 and were recommended for our appointment. We'll take each one individually. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Theodore Simonini?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion on the candidate?
Have a nice night.
Seeing none, I will...
Well, Mr. President?
Oh, yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
I just wanted to say, I wanted to compliment Mr. Simonotti. I looked at his resume, and I think it's very, very good.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
And I just wanted to compliment whoever did it, I think it might have been Deb, that the resumes are here now for appointments, for new people.
Yes, thank you to the council clerk for that information in our packet. Thank you so much. All right. So any further discussion on Theodore Simonini? Seeing none, can I get a roll call vote for our appointment?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you.
And for Haley Besowitz?
Do I hear a motion? A motion and a second, second by Ms. Strigels. Any further discussion on Haley? Seeing none, again, I'll ask for a roll call vote for appointment.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Abstain.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Eight in favor, one opposed.
Thank you.
Are you abstaining because you had, you had a conflict or something? Like you need to be recused?
No, 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 no. Just on the basis of the resume, that's all.
Because the proper process, as we've talked about before, would be to vote no. Abstaining is a no vote. Or if you need to recuse yourself, you just have to announce that and ask the president to be recused.
I do not need to recuse myself. Thank you, council.
Yep.
Thank you. All right. So that was an eight-one vote, then. Again, thank you to Theodore and Haley for coming forward to step up on the cultural council. I'll just remind both candidates to, to check in with the town clerk and register and sign in for those appointments. All right. We do not have any hearings this evening or license transactions.
You do have license transactions.
I'm sorry, license, I'm sorry, we do. On the backside of the page. We do have some license transactions. The first one being petition P. 2025-002, the granting of a one-day entertainment permit. Let's see, first one. Let's see. Oops, sorry. This one is for the Fire for Effect Foundation and the Fourth of July Committee for a trunk or treat on 10/24 of the Town River Landing from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. Mr. McKinnon, do you have any comments on that? Okay. They will also be showing a Halloween movie, and it's up to us to approve their one-day entertainment permit. So do I have a motion to approve?
Yes. Motion to approve.
And second, Ms. Ellenberg. Any further discussion on this particular event? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote for approval.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Excellent, and good luck to them for their event. Again, that's October 20th, 2024, from 2:00 to 6:00, the Town River Landing. Next up, petition P. 2025-004, change of stock interest in Champion's Indoor Golf. Champion's Indoor Golf is changing their stock interest in one of the requirements of the ABCC, is that certain paperwork?
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes.
Just with respect to this petition, could you inquire whether there is anyone here to represent the petitioner?
Let's see. I believe they don't have to, but is anyone here representing Champion's Golf? I do not see anybody.
Mr. President, I have questions in the proper order.
Okay. Well, let me just finish reading the little statement then, and I'll, we'll bring it up for discussion. So again, one of the requirements is that the ABCC is that certain paperwork be completed and approved by the local licensing authority, that is us, and then forwarded back to the ABCC. The Champion's Indoor Golf paperwork is in order, and this can be approved if we so choose. For something like this, the applicant does not need to come to the meeting, because it's usually an attorney handling the paperwork for the business.
May I ask questions for the record?
That's fine. Let me just get a motion and a second for discussion, and we'll discuss it from there. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chase, second for discussion.
Point of information, so on hearings, aren't we supposed to open the hearing?
This is a hearing for license transactions.
Okay. Thank you.
So we have a second for discussion. Ms. Ellenberg, you had a question?
Yes, I have several questions. Thank you. And I'm a little confused that is Champion's Indoor Golf, Inc. connected any way with the golf club?
No, it's not. Separate entity.
Okay. Does it do the liquor for the golf club?
No, separate entity.
What does it do?
It's its own business on Route 18.
Right across from the big factory, in that new cafe there.
That's what it is?
Nice little spot.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. You vouch nothing nefarious, right?
Good people over there.
Good people. Good people. Good, let's go with it.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Mr. President, yes, if I may.
Mr. Chase?
I noticed that this petition to authorize a change in, in stock ownership tells us nothing whatsoever about the nature of this change. We don't know who a selling stockholder is, who is an acquiring stockholder, what number of shares, is it a majority interest, a simple controlling interest? We know nothing. And I think the information was just likely inadvertently omitted from our application, but it tells us absolutely nothing, except that there's a change of ownership that maybe we would need to know about.
Okay.
So my, my suggestion is, since there's not anyone here to represent the petitioner, that we continue this to a future meeting when this can be answered.
Okay. Advice from town council on the situation?
Yeah, I mean, I think you take that vote, and if the, the will of the council is to continue it, then at the later date, you could get the paperwork, and if you want the applicant, obviously someone can reach out.
I second that.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenberg, question?
I just wanted to make a comment in the general discussion, that we, the council, do not want to be against the private sector businesses, and I think maybe the ownership stuff, I don't know, executive session or whatever, I don't know, I don't know, maybe not. But we should not be impeding the private sector, private business. That was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to speak for Counselor Chase, but I think it's more so a lack of transparency in the overall application that we have in front of us, and we're supposed to be voting based on what's in front of us. So I think there's a level of issue with what we are missing, as far as information.
I think we're looking for clarification what the change of stock interest is from what to what, and that's a perfectly reasonable request.
We don't have any information in our package. Is that intentional?
Right, no.
Ms. Ellenberg, Mr. Lindy, you had a question?
No, I just wanted to echo what Counselor Strigl said. I think transparency is important, and it's two weeks from now. So I think we can gather the information we need and...
Yeah, yeah.
So then I'd say, also, we'll take a vote on postponing, and then we'll make arrangements to reach out to the Champion's Indoor Golf and see if we can get some answers or representation at the next meeting to discuss it. So let's, we'll have a vote to move to postponing. I had a first and a second. Can I get a roll call vote on a move to postpone till the next meeting?
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Okay, so we'll postpone till the next meeting, and then again, we'll reach out to Champion's Indoor Golf to see if we can get some answers on that question, or at least a representation to discuss it. All right, we do not have any presentations. We do have Town Manager's Report. Ms. Robinson, do we have anything to report?
And no, Counselor Perry, we do not.
Okay, totally understand. Does any councilors have any particular questions or requests for Ms. Robinson for the next meeting? Ms. Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hi, interim Town Manager, how are you doing? I just wanted to get two points of clarification. I was contacted by two different constituents on two separate issues. Can we get some information on how we go through the process of enforcing zoning violations at private residences for business purposes? I have a few constituents that contact me on a regular basis, so I just want it on the record that their voices are being heard, that their lives feel like they're being impeded. So I'd rather have it on record now versus the constant emails back and forth that feel like a game of telephone. And the second would be whether or not there is any plans in the future to pave Vernon Street. I had one constituent reach out to me specifically about the state of the road, so I just wanted to see if there's any plans within the next couple of years, five, just to give him a little bit of something. So that's what I have.
Mr. President?
Thank you.
Can I just speak to what she said?
Oh, indirect, okay.
She wasn't on the council when we voted on the five-year plan for the streets, and Vernon Street was one of five major streets that we said are going to be getting looked at. Flag Street right now is under bidding or something like that, and we just did another street, Deerfield, so there's only three left on that list. Vernon and Cross being two of those.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Ms. Lindy?
So two questions. Good evening. I just wanted to ask, I got an inquiry from a couple of constituents about Comfort Street, so I don't know where it is on the list, but I would appreciate having a conversation with that. And can I also ask that when Ms. Robinson is back, that I can ask her for other items for the next meeting? I don't have them here with me tonight.
Just email her.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And Mr. McKinnon?
Just two quick easy ones from me. So one's a firefighter, fire station. When Mike was here at the second meeting of every month, I believed he said he was going to give us an update on that, so that'd be nice if we could keep that trend going, because there is work, for sure, moving down there. It's good to see a foundation in the ground and work being done. And then a second, just whenever you get an update from the state when it comes to that tire dump, I know it might not be next meeting, but just like to hear about that as soon as I can. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other councilors?
Mr. Chris.
Ms. McGrath?
Yeah, Mr. Chris.
Go right ahead, yeah, Counselor.
Which one, me?
Yeah, go ahead, Susie.
Okay, thank you. I would like to request an update around Styles and Hart. I had a landowner, I've had a couple of conversations with the landowner related to a parcel of land that is in consideration around the easement and potential legal actions, so I would like to update what Styles and Hart, and update regarding that headowner.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Robinson, that's probably an executive session discussion. If that's something you want to discuss, we'd have to discuss it in executive session.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, Mrs. Robinson.
Oh, wait, wait.
Oh, did you have something?
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, Mary. So through the President to Town Council, does that mean I need to request that to be an agenda item for an executive session, or not that we've, I put that out there? Can it be captured?
Yeah, I mean, I think you've let the President know your intention to have that discussed in executive session, so I'm assuming he would put that on the next agenda as such.
Our Debra Ward.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McGrath?
Mrs. Robinson, at the July 23rd Town Council meeting, a resident shared their concern about the move of the Board of Health in with the inspection office because there's no area for privacy. Have you considered this move may put the town in violation of the HIPAA Act? Also, the Board of Health has no doctor or healthcare professional for a while. Not only is this position important for the public health of the residents, but hopefully this individual can lead the way to form a committee to gather ideas for the use of the opium settlement of 64,000 that the Bridgewater received. So how can you fill this position for the town? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Anybody else? I've got nothing else, so we'll move forward.
Question? That is your question, Ms. McGrath? You're assigning to our Town Manager? If I'm, is that correct?
I'm going to look into it.
Thank you.
Wanted to look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have discussions. We've got a few councilors who wanted to bring this up, between Councilors Robinson, Lindy, and McGrath, the relationship between the Town Manager and the school district. I get, Counselor Lindy, do you want to start off the discussion, or was that something you wanted to discuss, or was it...
No, I wanted to hear information about it.
Okay. I know, I saw an email, Ms. Robinson, did you want to kick off the discussion on this?
Sure. So this is a topic that had been on the agenda for the ad hoc search committee for the Town Manager, and it was a topic that was brought up by School Committee Member Fitzgibbons. And I think there was some, so there was some valid feedback from the Councilwoman McGrath that any topic like that actually was very appropriate for the rest of the council to be aware of what was being discussed, and for the entire council to discuss the overall relationship between the Town Manager role and the school district. So that's simply all it is, is just making sure whatever was shared in that ad hoc search committee as a topic around expectations or feedback around the relationship be brought forward here to the entire council.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Yeah, basically, just that item that was on our ad hoc agenda was based on an email from another school committee member, just wanting to make sure in our process of finding a new Town Manager, that we would stress, you know, that we would want a strong, a good relationship between the Town Manager and the school committee, and that's all that email was about. Did you have any further questions or discussion?
I did. I took it a different way, because our charter on page 52 online, section two, no, section five, Bridgewater Rainham School District, it says the District Committee may meet with the Town Council on educational or budgetal issues and to discuss these matters. And the reason I brought that up is because of the dropout rate. So on September 25th, 2024, I listened to the Superintendent Powers' report to the BRRSD School Committee meeting, and he talked about new students on day one of the school year was 148, and at the end of September, 43 moved into our town. The class size, just at the middle school and kindergarten, are 27. First grade is 26, and the second grade is 25. Mr. Powers also stated safety issues is a challenge, and it happens quite often, where parents and police are notified. And a member of the committee stated that suspending the students aren't helping. So where we can discuss educational stuff with the committee, I think it's important that the Town Manager has a strong relationship with them, bring forth this information, so we could, you know, we have the budget, we could provide for extra, you know, like a security guard, it's according how bad the suspension is, or even work with BSU to have mentors. Because in ninth grade, you, if you look at the ninth grade, there's quite a few kids that don't even pass ninth grade. I mean, I have, you can print, you can look at it, it's printed on the, you know, the school report. So you have a 12-point percent dropout rate for grade 12. You have 115 kids who are low income, and I think it was only 57 of them that passed ninth grade. They need help. So that's why I'm bringing it forward.
So just, so your point is you want our Town Manager going forward to have a strong relationship with the school and keep apprised of these types of developments?
Yes, and that we can, it says the District Committee may meet with the Town Council on educational and budget issues. So they're actually, they can come and talk to us, just like our community.
Well, we usually meet with them once or twice a year, especially around budget time to discuss these types of issues.
Yeah, but this says educational too. So I think the budget's important, but the education of our children, you know, and the...
The curriculum.
You also look at the report, report cards, or listen to this meeting, and it's concerning, and we can help. We have the budget, so we should help them, you know, fix these problems, just not the budget to pay for school teachers in the, once a year. We should be involved more.
Okay. Mr. Lindy?
So kind of piggybacking on Counselor McGrath's comment, I think, having been on a school committee at one point, we had nine towns to deal with. It's a regional district, it only has two. I also think it would be a good idea, we don't have a lot of discussions generally, since I've been on, it would be a good idea to have, you know, the Chair of the School Committee, Superintendent of Schools, come here and talk about that. Our purview is not the educational, it's like, the district is kind of its own sovereign organization. However, we do get asked questions by constituents about BR stuff. I usually refer them to a school committee member, but it would be helpful for the public, I think.
Mr. President, actually, I have a quick question. I know no one from the school is here to answer it, but BR is still school choice. Does anyone, do any of us know that?
Is school choice still going on, yes?
It is still school's choice. Right, just wondering.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Ellenberg?
I would like to offer an amendment, and I have a written version here that I would like to pass out.
Amendment to what?
To what we're talking about?
We're having a discussion, there's nothing to amend.
You mean you have a proposal?
This, this is for after the discussion.
This is part of the discussion.
Okay. This isn't...
Can I, can you all pass this down?
Yeah, this is for legislation, this isn't for the discussion. This is a...
Okay.
Yeah, we don't, if it's a something...
Fine, you might as well all read it, pass it around, and we'll get to it at the appropriate time. Thank you, Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
So I don't, I don't have access to a copy of that. I don't have access to a copy of that. Is it possible to...
I'll send her a quick copy.
That's fine, yep.
Good.
Again, it's nothing, nothing we're discussing or taking action on tonight, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this topic? As President, oh, go ahead, Ms. Robinson.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for the perspectives to my fellow councilors. This is one of those, I agree with so much that's been said tonight, and I think it is one of the toughest challenges that we have in terms of, you know, more than 55% of our budget goes to the school district, and we have little to zero oversight of what, how those dollars are used, because operationally, the school district has sovereignty over how they use their budget funds, right? But I do believe there is an aspect around relationship building and influence and the sharing of information that could be improved. And anyway, so that is something that I will definitely be looking for, and I hope that others feel the same as we look for our next Town Manager in terms of that being a very big priority. We've really, at least the impressions I've had from my years of experience in FinCom, and then, you know, limited experience here so far in Town Council, though, is that we talk about budget, and that's kind of, it's just, you know, the annual semantics around trading of the dollars, and I really do believe that our district needs every bit of support possible from all corners, and I think that that relationship is going to be really, really important. So anyway, thanks for hearing me out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robinson.
May I contribute to the discussion before I make an amendment?
We can't make any amendments, we're just having a discussion right now.
Yes, may I contribute to the discussion?
Please, please, you certainly can speak.
Thank you. I agree with what Counselor Robinson has said in terms of we need to have input from many different sources, okay? And I think that would be very helpful, and I just wanted to say for the discussion that my amendment addresses that issue. That's all for the discussion.
And again, I can certainly reach out to the, Mr. Fitzgibbon to see, again, if a meeting of members of the school committee could meet with us at some point in a meeting down the line to have some discussions of some of these issues that some councilors have, we'll see what we can arrange.
Motion to consider the amendment, I hope someone will second it?
We can't, it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, that wouldn't be the process. You would have to propose that as legislation, and you wouldn't want to discuss it because you've prepared it, and it would be an open meeting law violation to discuss legislation that you prepared in advance. So I...
I'm sorry, Counsel, I will speak your piece, and then I will speak my piece. Thank you, Counsel.
Ms. Ellenberg, I will tell you, as the Chair of the council here, it's not on the agenda, we cannot discuss it this evening. If you want to write it up and put it on our next agenda, we can go over it at our next meeting.
According to counsel, I have a different opinion. I defer for him to make his first opinion, and I will read from the municipal manual...
Ms. Ellenberg, we're not going to entertain reviewing this, what you've written tonight, because it's not on the agenda.
Okay, so he's making a ruling, like a judge?
He's not ruling anything, he's advising us, but again, I'm telling you, I cannot entertain looking at the amendment.
Okay, I would like to advise otherwise, but all right, I defer. Let's put this off, this amendment. And why do we defer the entire article?
If you want to bring it up at our next meeting, write it up, and we'll have it on the agenda for our next meeting, is what I'm saying.
No. I have it as the ordinance named, an amendment to the ordinance, and my computer is fried, which is why it's handwritten.
The thing is, we're still in discussion right now. We got, we got to make a motion to end discussion, I believe.
Thank you.
Is, are we talking about two different things?
No, we're talking about two different things.
That's why.
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't gotten to legislation for action yet.
I thought this was new legislation that had to do with the school.
No, thank you. I'm sorry for the confusion.
That's probably why.
We're still...
You were correct, Counsel.
Oh, thank you.
Miracles happen, don't they?
We haven't...
Thank you, Lord.
We haven't gotten to legislation for action yet, so when it comes on up, then we'll be able to talk about an amendment.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Again, I thought this was...
Moving on.
I thought this was related to what we were discussing.
I understand.
All right. Committee reports. Does any committees have any reports that they'd like to make this evening? Okay.
Just wanted to give a brief, I just wanted to give a brief update on the ad hoc search committee group. We've met now twice, in two of the previous Mondays consecutively. The first meeting that we had, we reviewed RFP proposals, and we came up with a plan to review those proposals as a group. And so just last evening, we met again as a group, and folks of that committee brought forth their ratings for each of the three RFPs that we received. Our next course of action is to reach out to references for those RFPs and speak with folks from other towns who've used those firms. And so the committee is in the process of doing that now and obtaining references, and our plan is to, again, meet later this month with our references and possibly schedule three interviews, or we will be scheduling three interviews with each of those search firms to discuss a little bit further and learn a little bit more from those groups. So the committee is meeting, the process is happening, but I just wanted to update folks that, where we were at and what our next steps are there.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Point of order, Mr. President?
Yes.
Can we just make sure that the gallery remains quiet when councilors...
Can I have a quiet in the gallery, please? Thank you.
So that we're not distracted, and we can hear what councilors are saying. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels. Thank you to Mr. Murphy. I just wanted to also let people know that Mr. Murphy was appointed Chair of that ad hoc committee, so... Mr. Lindy?
So I want to thank the committee for their work. I was able to attend the meeting last night with Counselor McGrath. It's an interesting process. I noted, I noted last night in public comments that the committee had discussed interviewing those firms on Zoom, and I am going to suggest again publicly, for the record, that I would like to see everything be transparent, and that if they are on Zoom, I also think there should be an in-person option, that those participants could travel by Zoom, and the committee of our councilors, this ad hoc committee, could be present for the meeting. I think it works better. I think meetings should be more in-person than on Zoom. I think this town is behind the eight ball with the Zoom meetings, and I think it's time to go back to in-person meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy.
You're here.
All right, so any other committee reports?
Well, budget, budget and finance can, kind of on the Vice Chair, I'm sorry, the Vice Chair of...
MJ.
MJ. On her comments, I think that budget and finance of the council can meet as many times as we want. If finance can't meet, then we can't do the action. So, you know, I'm going to put forth a name, and I think the Town Clerk has already put forth a name, so the Town Manager also gets to pick one. I don't know if there's a vacancy there, but I, we've got to do something.
Yep, we'll see what we can do to get that, the numbers up there, so we can function as a council and a town. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Go once, go twice? All right, moving on. So we are moving on to legislation for action. First up is Ordinance D...
Proposed amendment? Yeah.
Hold on a minute.
Okay.
Yes, give me a moment to answer here. We have Ordinance D. FY25-005, the ordinance establishing the process for higher town manager. This went before Rules and Procedures and was voted three to zero with the amendments that we took on 9-9, and was advertised in the enterprise in 9-17. So it is in front of us this night for potential approval. Do I have a motion to approve?
So...
Ms. Strigels, second for discussion. Mr. Chase. Ms. Ellenberg, you have some discussion.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the proponent of the amendment, thank you. Mr. Murphy, credit to you, kudos for having drafted this legislation. Thank you. I'm trying to build upon it. Proposed ordinance, section four, section two, second paragraph, I'm going to read the sentence that comes right before my amendment. It is, quote, "This decision will be made by a majority vote of the preliminary screening ad hoc committee," unquote. Okay, all I want to add is the words, "Other town councilors not on said ad hoc committee may attend all the screenings of candidates as observers within executive session meetings." Our council secretary will post all proposed executive sessions of said ad hoc committee to avoid quorum posting violations in a timely manner." I'm sorry, I added a couple of words to what I read out loud, sorry. But you do have the written version, but just so that the public should hear what it's about.
That would be an open meeting law violation.
What, for it to have more of us in an executive session?
Let me read what it says on the Attorney General's website under frequently asked questions about preliminary screening committees. "May a preliminary screening committee which meets in executive session under purpose eight to consider candidates for employment or appointment consist of more than a quorum of the members of the parent body?" Answer: No. A preliminary screening committee must consist of fewer than a quorum of the members of the parent body. It may contain additional members who are not members of the parent body. For example, a school committee with seven members may create a subcommittee to conduct a preliminary screening of candidates for superintendent of schools in executive session, and the preliminary screening committee may contain up to three members of the school committee in addition to several teachers and members of the community. What you're calling for is beyond a quorum of the council to be present in executive session, which is an open meeting law violation. I would advise you not adopt that amendment.
Thank you, Attorney General.
Okay. May I, Mr. President, respond?
Go right ahead.
I defer to you on that. I had not checked the Attorney General law on that, and another comment is just that we've got the charter, we've got the council rules, we've got, it's rather excessive, the amount of things we have to refer to... amount of things we have to refer to under our charter. That's a side comment. But based on our council's advice, I will withdraw the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg.
Mr. Lindy.
So having served on a school committee and having dealt with a superintendent screening process and on a second one, that is 100% right, okay? We had a 10-member school committee. We had to stay under five. And I think we did three, and then we had like someone from the school administration or something like that. It's, yeah, there's a lot that we have to deal with, and it just seems like it's cumbersome to the way government runs and transparency, but it is what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Any other discussion on that? Ms. McGrath.
Yeah, I just have one question on this, Counsel Murphy. It says that the screening ad hoc committee will prepare detailed description and qualifications for the town manager's position. Will we have input on that, the rest of the town councils? Because by law, we can. I think you already have that in here.
You're in the same section?
Yeah, this is number two under section 4-1. Once established, the preliminary screening ad hoc committee will prepare a detailed job description and qualification for the town manager position. It will be the job of the ad hoc to do that, but we're certainly getting feedback from all counselors if there's certain other item descriptions that you'd like to see in there. Then just get them to members of the ad hoc committee to have that discussion.
Because in section three, it does say that the town council may from time to time establish additional qualifications as Dean Nessa.
Right.
So I was asked by residents if we would have any input, so I just wanted to make sure that question was answered.
Yeah, by all means, this is a town council process in the end, so, yeah. The ad hoc is just the motor that's driving the machine here a little bit.
I just wanted to make sure before I answered.
No, no problem. Thank you.
Kind of on that point, is the charge of the ad hoc committee, from my understanding, was to help the selection, to select the consulting firm to conduct the search?
That's part one.
Okay. Is it all spelled out for all the different, in this one?
Yeah, it's all spelled out in this.
But I have the same concern, because I was approached by people that want to, you know, I understand the whole executive session thing, but.
Yeah, that's a separate thing, but like in public session.
You can still hold meetings to talk about what the council as a whole envisions for qualifications, and you may all differ on that, right? Some may want one thing, some may want something different. That's why you have nine, and you take a vote. But you can have the public meeting on that part of it. It's the screening part of it, the part of reviewing the qualifications of the individual candidates, the confidential information that occurs in executive session that the whole body is not a part of.
So we could, let me finish. So we could, in fact, use one of those two public meetings that are allowed in council rules about an important subject to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you could have a town council meeting to discuss things that aren't within that. So the executive session would be about to consider interview applicants, specific applicants, for the employment or appointment by a preliminary screening committee if the chair declares an open meeting. So if you're not considering specific applicants, but you're talking about general, this is what we'd like to see in a town manager, I think that's an open meeting. You just posted as a meeting.
But prior to the focus groups, we could use one of those two meetings to get input from the residents.
You guys do it however you want to do it. You can have an open meeting, as long as you don't talk about executive session stuff.
Right.
Because I'd like to ask for that.
That's fine. Again, the whole process is going to be outlined once we do bring in an outside firm. Ms. Ellenberg.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to ask about the process between the ad hoc committee and the full council.
Again, that's still to be laid out. I mean, a lot of this is laid out in the procedure that's in front of us.
Well, that aspect, that transition from ad hoc to full council, I want my information early, even if I'm not voting until two weeks later, of who that ad hoc committee has chosen amongst the people that the search firm found for you. And then you screen them, and then there's a transition to the council members before we take a vote. I don't need my information showing up the night of the meeting, which has happened recently, frequently. So how do we ensure, how do we amend this to put in that the ad hoc committee will promptly forthwith inform the council in general?
Again, it's laid out pretty much as it's going to happen here in what you have in front of you.
I don't see it, but maybe that's my flaw.
Again, it, again, section five gets into the process, initial screening and selection of finalists, interview process.
Okay, maybe it's my mistake. Well, let's look at it.
Can I just add something? I'll make a suggestion that the packets get posted, in my opinion, pretty late. Friday is half a day at town council. You can get your stuff online, but that's not enough time to look at something.
To look at the packet and be prepared properly for the constituents.
Most important decision we're going to make.
They're following the, you know, open meeting rules and posting rules in regards to meeting. Everything's being followed according to mass law, so.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
May I comment? The thing is, the regular council meetings stuff, if it gets to us on Friday, that would be awesome, but this stuff from the ad hoc committee needs to come to us like a full two weeks before the council would even consider going to an open session with whatever.
Anything that the ad hoc is doing is going to be transparent and open to everyone on the council, so there's nothing that's going to go on that's not going to have any, you know, the entire council's notice.
That's right, except we can't attend because it's an open meeting law violation, but what the hell? Sorry.
Not an executive session. That's different.
Okay.
All right. So getting back to the subject at hand, approval of the ordinance. Any further discussion on the substance of the ordinance? Seeing none. We have a, yes, Ms. Ellenberg.
May I make an amendment? The preliminary screening ad hoc committee will ensure that the proper background checks have been completed for all finalists and submitted to the council in a timely manner. I just want to add those words. Sorry, my voice is going.
Does anyone have a second for her amendment? Seeing none. I'm sorry. I will ask for a roll call vote on the ordinance as written.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
In deference to Mr. Murphy, I vote yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, everyone. Now we can move solidly forward in the search for permanent town manager. Next up, order O-FY 25-010, granting of an easement from Mass Electric. This was introduced by the town manager at our 9-10 meeting, and our first second reading tonight and action on it. Do I have a motion to approve? So moved. Second by Ms. Strigles.
For discussion?
For discussion. Any discussion on the matter?
Yes, I believe I do. Is this the Mass Electric Company?
This is to get the fire station power.
Oh, okay. My question was, what property, and is it town-owned land or private land? Do you know?
It's town-owned land.
That was my question, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much. Moving on to order O-FY 25-011, granting of an easement through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Again, introduced by Counselor Chase. This goes to the conservation easement for Old Farm Trail. Mr. Chase, any words to?
Just very briefly, as Kitty Doherty had much more eloquently discussed earlier in the evening, this relates to the old State Farm Trail, which has now reached a critical point at which our approval of this easement will permit actual steps to be undertaken on the ground. And once again, I think a great deal of credit is owed to her and to the, those working with her over the course of many years, and I'm very happy to see this coming to fruition finally.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chase. Motion to approve? And second, second by Mr. Lindy. Any further discussion?
I have a couple of questions, yeah, for discussion. I'm sorry I'm interrupting inappropriately. Sorry.
Ms. Ellenberg, question.
Grantor, where on Summer Street? And I see it's 100-foot by 100-foot parking easements for the proposed drive, which sounds wonderful, but I note that there is no Registry of Deeds recorded numbers on this thing, and I would like to have recorded numbers at the Registry of Deeds what it's going to be.
That would happen after the fact.
The way it works in practice is.
I meant the address. I should have said the address. What is the address of this?
They refer to it as Zero Summer Street.
Okay.
There's no structure there.
Okay, okay.
Anything further, Ms. Ellenberg?
No, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from any other counselors? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you, and congratulations, Kitty. All right. Unfortunately, items D, E, F, and G will have to postpone to our next meeting until the finance committee can get together and render a decision on their parts. So we will move to item H, order O-FY 25-007, an order dedicating 46th and 48th Summer Street as a public park pursuant to MGL Chapter 45, Section 3. Again, one of the criteria was the getting of state funds for the park, which we have gotten awarded $500,000 to do. So we, the Community Economic Development Committee met and voted 2-0 to recommend following through with this order, so I'll ask for a motion for approval. So moved. And second by Mr. McKinnon. Any further discussion or questions on the matter?
Discussion?
Ms. Ellenberg.
I just want to say kudos. Is that you, Mr. Ruley, who got this?
No, in actuality, it was Mr. Dutton that initiated the grant application.
Well done. That was my comment.
I would agree. All right. Seeing any other further comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
And Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, everyone. Finally, we have petition P-2025-003, the warrant for state election. This is a warrant that is issued by the state to the registers each election. It details what is on the November ballot, along with polling location and questions. The petition must be voted and signed by the town council, which we will do, and then the signed warrant must be posted by 10:29 in the town clerk's office. Do I have a motion for approval? So moved. Second, Mr. Chase, second. Any further discussion on the matter? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigles?
Yes.
And Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.
Very good. Thank you very much. That ends our legislation for action for this evening. We do not have any old business, and as we take a new business out of order, we can move to now citizen comments. Again, if anyone would like to come up and make a comment, please give a name and address, and please keep your comments within three minutes.
Christina Agemiyan, 221 Aldrich Road, Bridgewater, Mass. And I am a member of the Executive Committee of Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, BCCR. I'm concerned about the passage of the resolution flying the POW MIA flag. I think it's a wonderful thing, an honorable thing to do. The suffering of persons of war and the anguish of the families of those missing in action should be remembered and honored by all communities, ours included. However, there is a precedent for the month of June in Bridgewater. We have had resolutions approved for the last several years to fly the pride flag the first two weeks of June, and then the Juneteenth flag the following two weeks of June, the last two weeks of June. I think to place those flags in a lower position, in a third-rate position on the flag, is denigrating, and I'm hoping that there is a possibility of an amendment to the resolution where the month of June could be separated out and to maintain the tradition that we have now in Bridgewater of honoring the LGBTQ+ community and the African-American history that goes along with Juneteenth. The POW MIA flag should fly and deserves to fly the other 330-plus days of the year, but I'm requesting an amendment to that resolution, if it's possible, to maintain the tradition that we've established in Bridgewater, to fly those two flags. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Anybody else like to come up? Ray?
Ray Agemiyan, Aldrich Road. I also served in the United States Army from 1965 to 1967, and I want to echo my wife's comment. I think it's a proper comment that you take up the fact that you can amend the procedure for the month of June. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Lynette Delano Chase, 6th Old Farm Road. I am infuriated by what I just listened to on my way home, the level of disrespect that is going on in this council, the way you speak to the town counselor, the way you speak to others. I'm disgusted. It would not fly in any job that I've ever been employed in, and I think it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynette.
Hi, Lorraine Powers, 51 Sunrise Drive. I also am a member of Bridgewater Communities for Civil Rights, and I applaud and think it's awesome that the POW MIA flag will now be flown. My husband is a veteran. In fact, he actually had a meeting a few weeks ago with our new veterans agents in terms of what he could do to help volunteer. terms of what he could do to help volunteer. And I'm not going to repeat what Chris has already said, but with the precedence that this would be the fourth year for the pride flag raising and the third year for Juneteenth. And this is, for those who have been there, this is more than just the raising of the flag. The celebrations that take place are so meaningful to these marginalized communities, the African-Americans and the members of the LGBTQ. We always have high school students from BR who come to speak at both times and relay exactly how important it has been to them to be able to have these opportunities to celebrate together. I think that's all I want to say. So I would also ask, if possible, if that resolution could be amended. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else like to come up and speak? MJ?
Mr. President, members of the council, residents in attendance, MJ Spagon, 5 Lake Shore Center, Unit 1128. I've gone to many council meetings in my years living in town. The council, former government's, has only been in existence since 2011, so that's 13 years. I would like to give at least a little bit of constructive criticism. First off, Robert's Rules of Order, please review them, get a copy of them, they're available at Barnes &amp; Noble, Amazon, and any other place you can find a book. Please be respectful to each other. This is a forum of public government, of law, of jurisdictional authority. I would implore every last member here on this council, as a citizen who you represent, please, please show some sense of civility and decency. The residents of this town deserve only that much, and if not more, the civility and respect that is incumbent upon us as public officials in our day-to-day lives and in our day-to-day work. Mr. President, again, I implore you, not just as a member of a volunteer government, not only as a resident in the town of Bridgewater, but a citizen of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, a citizen of the United States. We are a whole hell of a lot better than this, and frankly, the town of Bridgewater deserves better. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, MJ. Anybody else like to speak? Go on once, go on twice.
Well, okay, never mind. We're doing council comments, right?
Thank you for those that came up to speak. We will now go to council comments. I will start with Mr. McKinnon to my right.
None for me today, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McKinnon. Ms. Robinson, online.
Just a brief thank you to the folks who continually show up and voice their opinions and their thoughts, and thank you for reminding us of our roles here and how we should be conducting our office as representatives of you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Ellenberg?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Robinson. We have difference of views, but thank goodness, we stand under the American flag, which stands for freedom, that allows the five freedoms of the First Amendment, and the men who fought for it and spilled their blood, or became paralyzed, or lost a limb, or whatever, PTSD, to protect those five freedoms in the First Amendment. I feel very strongly that different views can be tolerated at our council, and there should not be reprimands if someone gets a little angry. I know the citizens in this town have been extremely angry at the dysfunction of this council. I've been trying to bring fair process, and Mr. Murphy has been good and is doing straight arrow process. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyway, these are my prepared comments, which I'm going to start now. So I, in conclusion, I support the American flag, the POW MIA flag, and all other flags are welcome, all year long, as far as I'm concerned, in third position. We got to keep our priorities straight, that's all. They're welcome all year long, third place. Okay, now, last week, I asked for a list of volunteers. People can go on the town website, see where there's openings for volunteers, boards, commissions, committees. Kudos to Ms. McGrath, who manned the booth for the volunteers. I do not know, Town Manager Robinson, did you arrange for the booth so that Ms. McGrath did?
Actually, Mr. Dutton made arrangements for that, at no cost to the town.
Thank you. That was very good. All right, so, I've heard from a couple of people that tried to volunteer. So they tried to log into the questionnaires, and then they asked, they pressed the button for an email confirmation. One person specifically complained, one constituent, that they didn't get their email confirmation. I don't know anything about anyone else, whether they got email confirmations or not. But this person I talked to was put back to the login at the very beginning. So that kind of discourages citizen volunteers, and I asked the town manager and the IT people to fix this volunteer login link, okay? And I guess I can look on the website for what seats are not filled, but it would be nice if we councilors could be provided a list of vacancies and who, whether it's a councillor or a citizen that needs to fill the seat. If I could kindly ask for that list from you, Ms. Town Manager, I'm sorry, Robinson. Anyway, speaking of commissions, the ConCom is still meeting, and the NIP issue is coming up on a Zoom meeting this Thursday, October 10th. I think it's this Thursday, or maybe it's next Thursday. Anyway, October 10th at 5:30 PM, the link to that Zoom meeting for citizens will be on Facebook Town Pages, asking everyone to attend about the NIP. And I ask that public notice about this potential Zoom meeting be posted by our council secretary so we don't have a quorum problem at the ConCom meeting if it turns out more than, what, four of us, five of us? If we get the fifth one, then we're in a problem. Could you post it, please? Anyway, thank you. And then, I'd like to thank everyone who helped at Autumn Fest. The town was awesome. Everybody was awesome. I especially want to compliment two young men, two young town volunteers who were helping to transport the cart of RTC stuff to our booth at Autumn Fest, and the RTC stuff, the signs and posters and whatnot was misplaced, unfortunately. But these two young men, fine young men, searched the premises till they found our stuff and brought it to our booth. Kudos to them. Kudos to all the organizers of Autumn Fest. Well done. I know I'm talking long. I got one last thing from the Osameequin Club, which is an announcement from Lorraine Carosa, the former senior center director. She's on the Osameequin Board, and I would like to read her flyer. It says, "The Bridgewater Coal Yatton Senior Center is having a senior safety expo, October 15th, 11 to 2, at the senior center, 10 Wally Kruger Way." And it says, "Visit with local safety experts to learn how to keep your home, wallet, car, online presence, and community safe. Free lunch to the first 100 attendees." Ho, ho. Okay, and they will cover the topics of have your senior ID made, elder abuse, neglect, and fraud prevention, get info and resources for safety and wellness, and police canine That concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Ellenberg. Mr. Murphy?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the folks for Autumn Fest organizing a great event. I wasn't able to attend myself, I actually was in class all day, but my wife and two-year-old went, and he came back covered in stickers and excited for the experience there. So thank you to those folks. Thank you to BSU for hosting the event, and thank you to Council McGrath for hosting that table. I thought that was important, and so I commend you for that, too. Going off BSU, I had the opportunity to attend a meeting with some of their upper admin regarding homecoming upcoming this weekend. It was led by President Clark. I think they've done a fabulous job working with the students to adjust and make sure they're in line as best they can with homecoming. As somebody who works in student life at another higher ed institution, I know how difficult that can be, and I think they've done a great job. And from what I understand, there's been drastic improvement, especially over the last few years. So thank you to BSU for that, wishing them all the best. And homecoming, I know they incorporate a lot of the local businesses, so it's a big event for our town as well, too. I think there was also, and forgive me if I missed this, but I think there was a request for the recreational marijuana update, Councilor, I mean, Ms. Robinson, and so maybe we could get an update on that next meeting, I think that would be important. Sorry I forgot that during the town manager update, but if we could add that, that'd be great. And then my final thank you was to the citizens who showed up tonight and spoke, and to our veterans agent who gave us some significant numbers and background regarding the POW flag, so thank you to him as well, too.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Mr. Lindy?
First of all, just thank you to all the residents that always come and stay for the whole meeting. I do want to also say thank you to Council McGrath. I had an opportunity to stop by the table over there, I think that was a wonderful idea, and hopefully it results. I had some conversations with people when I was able to be there. The library was doing its book sale that day, so, you know, got to be in two places at once. As far as the flag situation goes, I think we could do and look at what other towns also do in cities. The POW MIA flag and the American flag should be up 365 days a year, but I don't want to see the Juneteenth and the pride flag be third place, or it would also have to be gone if the flag was at half mast, and all you would have are the two flags. So that would be another problem. So I had suggested at one point to Mr. Dutton that maybe we consider either another flagpole. We also have a memorial building that has a flagpole, we have a town common that has a flagpole, we have a lot of flags. The library has a flagpole, so maybe that can be part of the consideration, too. So I think we have options. As far as the FinCom thing goes, I'm glad it was discussed because it's an important role, and the other committees as well that need to be addressed, and I think that list will be very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lindy. Mr. Chase?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm certainly glad that we had a considerable degree of support for the flag resolution to fly the POW MIA flag here in town. Obviously, we're working from ground zero. We have a point of zero days currently of flying the POW MIA flag, and the proposal as I brought forward would have permitted for what I would estimate to be a full 11 months of display of that flag. That apparently is not enough for everyone, but we'll see what happens going forward. I do concur frankly with Councilor Lindy's remark, which was also discussed by one of our citizens earlier tonight, that just the notion, I think, of flying three flags is not, in my view, an ideal arrangement. I think that it tends to turn a flagpole into more of a totem pole, and I think it sends confusing messages, and I certainly want to see the POW MIA flag flown, which is why I brought forth the resolution I have tonight. But I honestly believe that citizens who bring forward a petition to council for the flight of a different flag, such as the pride flag, for example, should be entitled to their period of display without other flags but for the American flag to be flown. That's my personal opinion, may or may not be consistent with the opinion of all the other councilors, but I'm glad that we had the vigorous discussion that we did this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Ms. Strigels?
Thank you, Mr. President. I echo the sentiments of Councilor Chase. The two flags that are flown in June are specifically very important to me personally, specifically the Juneteenth flag. It is a testament to what my family has gone through and my own personal story. So like I mentioned, I have more than no problems creating an ordinance to work through this and make sure that all flags that matter to the town of Bridgewater are flown when they need to be flown, point blank and period. I want to really give kudos and thanks to Councilor McGrath. I also want everyone in this town to know that she continues to go above and beyond for the residents of this town, giving of her personal time, and she gave her entire Saturday. Her daughter also gave her entire Saturday to help her. I was able to help for about an hour and a half, and I just really want to publicly thank you for your efforts. It's making our town stronger and making sure that we're filling a void that is desperately needed. So I definitely wanted to thank you for that.
You're here.
I also want to make sure and echo Councilor Murphy's request for an update on the recreational marijuana sales and the numbers for that. I was given an email by a constituent right as I was walking into the meeting, so I just saw it as I was going through and grabbing the agenda in my email, and I think when constituents and citizens come and give of their time to ask questions of us or the town manager, we need to make sure that they're getting answers in a timely manner. So I would say that. And the last little bit is in regards to the expressed frustration from our citizens. I hear you. The lack of decorum is not something that I'm used to. I've operated in a Robert's Rules of Order for a very long time, and it's off-putting not just to you, but to some of us that are sitting up here, hopefully all of us that are sitting up here. And I want to publicly apologize to you, because we owe much better to you as constituents and citizens of this town. We can have respectful discourse and maintain productive dialogue while still being respectful to each other and the rule of order. So I do want you to know that I hear you, and I can at least promise on my part that I will continue to do better for you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Strigels. Ms. McGrath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mr. Dutton for helping me get a table at the Autumn Fest to inform and recruit residents for the boards, committees, and commissions. It was a great turnout. I want to thank Joshua McGuire for making the handouts. We gave away 87 of the 100 handouts. I want to thank Michael Sylvia from Open Space Committee. He was with me most of the day. The residents learned a lot about the town's trails and excited to see the video of all the trails that this committee is making. Thank you, Council Robinson and Strigels, for helping me at the table. I know President Perry and Council Lindy had other events to attend, however, they both made time to stop by and see how we were doing. That was very sweet, and thank you both. Most of all, I'd like to thank the residents who stopped by. Some residents have committed to join committees, others shared their wealth of knowledge about Bridgewater with me, and others their concerns. I made a list of these concerns and will address them at the town council. I appreciate it from hearing from everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGrath. Finally, for me, yes, to echo everyone else. Oh, I'm sorry, Susie, did we skip you? I'm sorry, Susie, go right ahead.
No, no, I did comment, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Just one thing I wanted to add on, since it's come up a couple of times. The request to the town via acting town manager, run a marijuana update. I had actually brought that up last week, and then we also said in that meeting that it may take some time to collect some of that information, so I don't think that it's being ignored. I think it was just a matter of, like, it's not like the easiest, like, oh, we can just run this ease report. So I just wanted to mention that it was actually brought up in our last public meeting. The other thing, too, is just, I believe I had asked, and I can't remember entirely on that minor detail, but I think that there is this aspect around, we want to understand the tax benefit from a financial perspective, of course, in terms of tax revenue, but I know I've been fairly vocal as a public advocate even before I was on council, that I believe that there is also potential cost or burden to other municipal services, but I'm not sure, and I think we're still super early days, because I just, actually, over the weekend, I happened to talk to one of the owners of one of our dispensaries who happened to have a table, a couple tables down at Autumn Fest, and it sounded like they, you know, again, early days for them having retail available, so I just wanted to mention those pieces as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie. Again, just to wrap up, again, everyone has mentioned, definitely want to thank the BBA who's in charge of putting the Autumn Fest together. It was a wonderful event, one of the better ones they've had in a long time, with the weather and the participation, the food trucks, it was a great, great event. I echo the sentiments that all the councilors gave to Ms. McGrath in setting up the table. I was helping out at a Lions Club booth, but I also tried to stop by and see how she was doing. But again, whatever we can do to get more citizen participation is always welcome. I certainly want to thank, again, Theodore Simone and Haley Beisowitz for stepping up to join the cultural council, and we look forward to their service on that particular committee. The other thing I wanted to recognize about that day was, earlier that day, the Police 5K, they had their 10th 5K, much in part to Rebecca Kahler, who was the race coordinator, and she was duly recognized for all her hard work the past 10 years. I was there representing the council along with Senator Timmelti. We were congratulating all the winners and passing out trophies and all that type of stuff. So it was a good event to start the day there. As Council Murphy mentioned, I also joined him at BSU Roundtable. It was a great gathering of BSU employees with the president and members of the town here as well, just to kind of have a conversation about how BSU and the town can work closer together on events, including their upcoming homecoming and things of that nature, to make it a safe event for these students as well as the town. Ultimately, again, as the discussion went, I think we could all just take a deep breath and step back as we work together as a council to do it as graciously and as civilly as possible. We're here representing the town as a whole. We're trying to move forward and do good things for the town. We've taken the steps that we need to do now to move forward in finding a new town manager. So again, I will, as always, try to lead us in a positive direction. So again, I will, as always, try to lead us in a positive direction, and hopefully we can continue to work closely together and civilly and professionally to represent the town well and to do what needs to be done for the town.
You're here.
With that, I have, and one other thing I do want to mention, as people have talked about the flags. Again, I think it's a very sensitive issue on many sides of the coin, so we definitely have to look at all sides and come up with solutions that's going to certainly try and make everyone as happy as possible, and I think there's some good ideas that were just floating out about just in this recent conversation here with the council comments. So we will do our due diligence to come up with some solutions that's going to work for everyone and hopefully bring them forward at a future meeting. With that, I'll ask for a motion to get out of here. All right, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. McKinnon?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Ms. Ellenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Dr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Ms. Strigels?
Yes.
Ms. McGrath?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed.